Good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First two items on the agenda is my pleasure to introduce the proclamations for two different subjects. The first one is Autism Awareness Month. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas autism or autism spectrum disorder refers to a broad range of conditions characterized by challenges and social skills, repetitive behaviors, speech and nonverbal communication. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control, autism affects an estimated one in 59 children in the United States. Whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socio-economic background. And whereas autism is estimated to be the fastest growing developmental disability in the United States by the Center of Disease Control and autism and developmental disabilities monitoring. And whereas early diagnosis and intervention as well as ongoing support from family, doctors, therapists, and educators can have a great impact with persons with autism to achieve better outcomes. And whereas persons with autism should have access to appropriate services throughout their lifetime so that they may achieve their greatest potential and lead happy and productive lives within their communities. Now therefore, I, Mayor Stan Worth, City of Beatrice, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Autism Awareness Month and encourage all our citizens to become educated and informed about programs, services, and opportunities to support individuals with autism. Witness my hand and official seal of the City of Beatrice the first day of April 2019. And I'm going to present this to Ted Fairbanks who brought it to our attention for the proclamation. The next proclamation has to do with Library Week, National Library Week, and Library Appreciation Month. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas libraries of all types are at the heart of cities, towns, and schools and campuses. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together. And whereas libraries and librarians building strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise. Whereas libraries which promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all are cornerstone of democracy. And whereas librarians and library workers partner with other civic organizations to meet their community's needs. And whereas libraries and librarians empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information. And whereas libraries serve all members of the community offering services and educational resources that transform lives and strengthen the connections that we all share. And whereas libraries, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Stan Worth, Mayor of the City of Beatrice, do proclaim April as Library Appreciation Month and April 7th through the 13th, 2019, as National Library Week. I encourage all residents to visit the library this month to explore what is new to you and to participate in the special exhibits and programs planned for you to enjoy. Because of you, libraries transform. Witness my hand and official seal, City of Beatrice this first day of April 2019. And with us is our city librarian, Lorraine Ridesol. Lorraine, I'm going to make this presentation.
I brought you something just so you'd have something to attend during the month. So we'll trade.
All right. I think Douglas wants to take a picture.
Oh, well, let's have this. That's right.
All right. Okay. No, I'll put this over there. You guys out.
Okay. Yeah, I'll write a statement just as long as I can here. I'll just give you one if you can. Somebody, Erin, would you like a copy too?
Thank you.
I don't know what you guys think of this place. It's been trading around.
Thank you. Musical chairs. Thanks, Lorraine.
Yeah. Well, there's always that thing about new perspectives.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Yeah, everything. Yeah. Let me just say something.
Absolutely.
Get on my way so you can get on with the agenda. I am Lorraine Ridesol, the library director. And this year, we do have, again, a full schedule during the month. I will just point out that there's children's programs each week on Wednesday mornings at 10:30, and that's a whole combination of activities for children from the lap sit stage all the way up to kindergarten. So that people who have children that may have fit into the old traditional storytime from three to five, or people who have children that are under three, which used to be a different program, we just put it all together. So whatever age you have of a preschool child, they can come to that activity. Our special seed library program this month is going to be kind of an art activity. We're actually going to have paper made that has seeds in it so you can give it away, send it as a card, take it out, let the rain turn it into mush, and the seeds go out and hopefully grow and survive and bring us something pleasant later on in the year. Again, we are partnering with the art department at Southeast Community College, and we will have an exhibit from the 6th to the 20th in our lower level of the Veticultural Center area. So we want to encourage any of you to stop in and take a look at that. Stitch One Read Two is the arts program where people show each other their crafts programs and also share what book they're reading at the time. So it kind of encourages people on several different kinds of leisure time activities. Believe it or not, this year is going to be 15 years since we did that joint activity with Homestead and the Community College. The library bought many, many materials to support that program. And having this author who has retraced some of the steps of what many of us knew as Sacagawea and we're now told we're supposed to be calling her Sacagawea, but whatever her name is, that is the program about that, complete with selfies that will hopefully be safe and not dangerous like some we've been seeing on the news lately. And that is an author program, and of course, it gives us a chance to get out a lot of those Lewis and Clark materials. We are closed on Easter quite simply because I can't find enough workers to keep the place open. So that's one holiday I never realized was such a family holiday until I tried to stay open on a Sunday. And then our book discussion this month in cooperation with Homestead National Monument is actually a book selected because of the 150th anniversary of the Golden Spike, which of course is where the two railroads came together in Utah. And this book is written by a Nebraska university professor called The Iron Way, The Railroad, Civil War, and the Making of America. So we do have copies. You don't have to buy that book. And quite honestly, this isn't school, so you don't even have to read the book. It's not a book report. You can come, listen in on it. If you have something to share that you know from railroads or any of the other topics, you can certainly join in. We're ending with a book sale. Tobias asked me one day about getting rid of books, and I told him I spend more time working on what we're going to remove from the collection than what we're going to add to the collection. Some of those removals, you'll have a chance to buy, as well as donations that people have given us that are just not appropriate for the collection or we already have. So we want to encourage you to come and take a look at that. And we will end with the spring gathering of genealogists. We no longer have a society, but we get the people who are interested in doing that together so they can share solutions, problems, different things that they have. And one of them always donates treats, so that's always a good time. Anyway, those and many other things that go on the library, we certainly want to encourage you to come and participate in it. Thank you for the time.
Very good. Thank you very much, Lorraine. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on March 18th, 2019, as on file in the City Clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $67,829.10. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $24,162.95. Item G, award of bids to HOA Solutions in the amount of $36,900 for the well F4 and F5 VDD/ VFD replacements as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item H, Resolution Number 6384, reappointing Cheryl Stroud Event to the Housing Agency as resident advisor. Item I, Resolution Number 6385, granting permission to Bobby Kramer to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, and merchandise in Hannibal Park and at the West Scott Street Ballfields. And finally, Item J, Resolution Number 6386, entering into an administrative and operational agreement for hazardous materials response services between the city and the state of Nebraska through the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency to establish Beatrice Fire and Rescue as a state emergency response team responsible for provisions of hazardous material, emergency response services. Any item that any city council member wants removed from the Consent Agenda, Rich?
I.
Item I, okay. Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Mr. Claybaugh?
Mayor, I move that the items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of I, be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Morgan, that the items under the Consent Agenda be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved eight zero. Go back to Item I. Mr. Claybaugh?
Mayor, I move that Item I, Resolution Number 6385, granting permission to Bobby Kramer to sell or offer for sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise in Hannibal Park and at the West Scott Street Ballfields be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Kerr, that we further discuss Resolution Number 6385. Rich, you have the floor.
I just had a question. Someone brought it up to me the other day about these vendors that come in, like on Bobby's and at the other things that are being... Do we charge sales tax? Do these folks charge sales tax and we get our little portion of the sales tax?
They're responsible for themselves remitting sales tax back to the state if necessary. So we don't get involved. That's between them and the Department of Revenue.
Okay. I just had that question asked me, and I couldn't answer them, so I thought I'd just ask.
Any other questions? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please, on Resolution Number 6385. That is approved eight zero. Resolution 6385 has been passed and adopted. Next is discussion and reports, and it's the presentation of the auditor's report and comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending September 30th, 2018. And Chris Linder, you've got the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to be here in front of you again tonight. My name is Chris Linder. I'm an audit partner with BKDCPAs in Lincoln, Nebraska, and kind of head up our public sector government team, working with a number of cities and counties and public power entities throughout the state and region. So happy again to be working with the City of Beatrice and appreciate our relationship there. First off, before I kind of dig into things, I want to just thank Linda, Linda Cook and the team at the city for all of their help throughout our audit process. The document that you have in front of you, which I know that you've all said have read and you have some copious notes and questions for me tonight, is a big undertaking on her part to help, you know, get together. And really, our job is to come in and audit it. You know, we don't prepare that information. We don't compile this document other than take our opinions to say that the information within this report is in accordance with GAAP. So we appreciate the efforts of Linda and the team there and everything that helps make the audit process smooth and timely and efficient from that standpoint. So we'll kind of cover a few things just as part of that. The other deliverable that you would have received is a separate... Mine's not in color. Yours, I think, would have been, unless it's copied, is our communication letter or management letter. And we'll touch on a few things there from a high level as well. And that, I always kind of say helps kind of provide a roadmap for, you know, as you're reading through this, you know, extensive document, what are some of the key items to focus on? You know, what are the key areas that I would look at as a council member, as somebody of governance, and say, where should I be focusing my time when I'm looking at the financials? So we'll touch on a few things there as well. From an audit approach standpoint, just to describe a little bit of how that works, how we do that, you know, in addition to some of the periodic communications and meetings before we even get, you know, really kind of get to year end, coming in right after year end and doing some of that interim and kind of risk assessment work early on. So looking at the controls, looking at segregation of duties, those checks and balances to make sure if certain reconciliations and reviews and things are supposed to be, you know, getting done timely, and certain other individuals other than Linda are needing to look at things and approve things, is that getting done? And are those controls in place and operating like they should be? So some of that early testing, and then that fieldwork piece is kind of a dynamic interim process over the course of several weeks. So coming in November for a few weeks, coming back in December for a few weeks, and then kind of our overall review after that, in addition to the team and myself that are here on site doing that testing. We have another partner or firm that will then review all of our documentation as well to make sure that we've crossed our Ts, dotted our Is, and are following everything, not just from an accounting standpoint, but on our end from an audit standpoint as well. So the process isn't... A lot of times, there's a lot of questions of, you know, what exactly does that audit entail in, you know, going into it? It's a little more than just kind of coming in for a few days and flipping through the documentation. There's a lot of testing and documentation that's required. Again, you know, a big thank you to the team at the city for allowing us to come in and bug them for several weeks and ask a lot of questions, obtain a lot of documents, and spend a lot of time there as well. From the overall financial review, Erin, just want to flip the next slide. Just a few high-level audit items for fiscal 2018. There were a few new accounting standards that the city was required to implement, and I have those listed up there very generally. The good news to these as well, I guess the good news to these was really that because of the nature of those items and the nature of the city's activities, they did not have a significant impact on the city in regards to requiring much of a change at all into what the city is currently doing from a financial reporting standpoint. So no real changes if you were to look at this report compared to last year and say, well, we had these new accounting standards. What did that do for us? In a sense, really, nothing there. And then one thing to always note, and this is not something that's new, is the Library Foundation is actually a separate nonprofit entity that because of the relationship between the city and that foundation, or the foundation and the library essentially, that it's brought into the city's financials because of the significance of that relationship, gets brought in as a component unit. And the other piece to that is that foundation is audited by another accounting firm. So bringing that in, that requires a little bit of coordination, communication between ourselves and that other firm to make sure that there are certain representations and things that follow the audit standards when we do that. From the financial statement report, I'm not going to dig into a lot of the numbers and details. If after today, if you have questions on anything, if there's anything in there that you would want to ask me of, I'll leave my contact information. I'd be happy to take a phone call, correspond by email if you'd ever have questions with me, even throughout the year as well. A few just things to touch on as part of the financial report. On page one of that, just a few pages into the document, is our financial statement opinion. So this is really saying, okay, you've done the audit, you've provided a opinion. What does it say? That is a clean or unmodified opinion. So that means the financial statements are in accordance with GAAP. We don't take exception to anything within them in terms of contradictions or conflicts with GAAP there. The other thing as well, just to note, near the end of the report, there are two additional opinions. So you'll see one that says in accordance with government auditing standards and one that is in relation to controls and internal control over compliance. So that first opinion, as part of our audit, we are also looking at internal controls and not just from a segregation of duties standpoint, but as part of our audit process, if we had material adjustments, if we came in and had to propose a lot of changes during our process, that would, you know, identify, hey, there's a control in place that really should be identified at the city level before we do that. And so as part of that, we did not identify anything reportable in that opinion, so kind of consider that a clean or unmodified opinion as well. And then that compliance opinion is required because of the federal dollars the city receives and spends. We had to test compliance with certain programs to make sure that we're spending the dollars, you know, in accordance and using allowable methods as well and timely and how we report things and everything. So there's a lot of compliance versus just the true dollar impact. And so we did not identify any noncompliance as part of that testing, so kind of a clean opinion there as well. Within the document then, just a few pages after our first opinion is the Management's Discussion Analysis, starting on page four. And that's where, again, I know it can be a little intimidating to go through and read the entire document with all of the detail of the schedules and the footnotes and some of the additional information in the back. But the MDNA or the Management's Discussion Analysis is a little shorter layman's read of the financials. It doesn't quite have the accountantese that the footnotes may have there. And so if you had 10 or 15 minutes to, you know, look at the financials at a high level and say, okay, you know, what did the city do from a revenue and expense standpoint? What were some of the changes year over year? And what are some of our activities looking forward? That would be within this document. Again, so it provides a little shorter read. You don't have to spend quite as much time to get through it all, and kind of gives you a good idea of what's the financial picture of the city without having to kind of dig into the entire document from that standpoint. And then near the end of the report, there's a statistical section in addition to the financial statements and notes. And I've had council members and board members in the past have really said they enjoy that section of the report because it also provides things at a little higher level, and then also in addition to just financial information, provides maybe some economic and demographic information as well. So looking at, you know, debt from a population standpoint, and some of the larger employers, you know, looks at kind of the tax base and who are the larger taxpayers within the city. So again, more, a little, depending on the council member, depending on governance, some of that, sometimes find that information a little more helpful for them and what they're looking at, and then also maybe a little more interesting as well. The... I touched on that other document, this short letter that was attached or included within your packet. And so within there, I have a few bullets just to cover real briefly. The first is, on page two of that letter, talks about any significant accounting estimates. So as part of the financial statement, there are items in there that aren't just a black and white. We can't, you know, look at a bank statement or look at an invoice and say, this is the balance that needs to be shown in our financials. There's some subjectiveness in determining what's recorded. And so again, that's done by Linda and the team there in determining what do we feel that estimate should be? Where should we land on that? So there's a few items listed there of what's included within the city's financials. Your allowance for uncollectible accounts. So for all the receivables that the city has from a governmental standpoint, from the utility standpoint, what's our estimate of those that may not be collectible in determining what that really is? Knowing exactly what that is on September 30th is difficult, so we have to make an estimate of what we feel may not be collected. Depreciation with the amount and type of infrastructure and assets we have, how long that is going to last us, and then what period we'll depreciate that over is obviously a significant estimate. The claims incurred, so being on a self-insured plan, the claims for our employees that may have been incurred before year end that won't get paid for several months, we have to make an estimate of that. The accrued closure and post-closure care, so in relation to the landfill, and determining what that liability needs to be. And then from the Board of Public Works standpoint, the utilities, the unbilled accrued revenues. So what's that customer consumption, that usage through year end, through month end, through the end of September? That's not been billed, it's not in our receivables, but still needs to be accrued because we as the city, as BPWR owe those. Any significant or sensitive financial statement disclosures, we have a few listed there as well. Those, again, because the accounting standards didn't require anything new this year, nothing that's new or questionable there. If we had any audit adjustments, so I did mention as part of that, when we look at internal controls, if we had significant audit adjustments, we'd have to look at that from a control standpoint. So we're happy to report in that section. There were no audit adjustments proposed as part of our audit engagement, so kudos again to Linda and the team at the city for having things in order and ready for us when we came in to perform our audit. And then from an internal control standpoint, as part of that control structure, if we came in and said that, well, we feel the segregation of duties needs work, we feel that there's controls around areas where we identified adjustments, we would report those in this letter. And so obviously, not seeing that section within the letter would tell you we did not have any of those items to report. We can't put that explicitly within writing there, but I can tell you verbally, the absence of that in this letter means we did not identify anything that we felt needed to come to the council as a reportable item from a control standpoint. And then at the end, we've listed just a few new accounting standards that'll be effective for the city in the next few fiscal years. You know, really nothing that at this point I feel has, will have a significant impact on the city. We've talked with Linda a little bit on these, and as they get a little bit closer, we'll obviously kind of see what will be that impact going forward on what some of those would be. So I won't go into a lot of detail in front of you guys here tonight, but if there's any there that you'd want me to discuss, I'd be happy to do that. Okay? And always, we just provide a few additional slides, just as some general information to say, okay, outside of the, you know, when you look at receivables and accruals and all those, well, give us a picture of a high level, just some of the numbers at a very high level. And so we're looking at this, some trend information. This is the city's valuation over the last five years and kind of seeing, you know, that uptick from 17 to 18, so about a nine-point, about a 9.6% increase there. But then if you go to the next one, looking and say, what was the impact on our property taxes year over year? And because we're actually able to bring our levy rate down just a little bit, having that pretty good sizable increase in the valuation, we still had a sizable increase in our overall tax revenues without having to increase, you know, we were actually able to reduce that levy just a little bit from a rate standpoint year over year. And then also, it's important, you want to flip to the next slide for me, in saying, okay, how do our financials look in the scheme of maybe other cities? Other municipal governments, looking at them within the state of Nebraska, similar size, and saying, what are some metrics to look at? A few of those we always look at is saying, well, from a leverage standpoint, where do we sit? And so one of those is looking at our governmental debt, so this does not include any of the utility or BPW debt. This is solely general obligation, type bonds and other debt. And then looking and taking that as kind of a factor using assessed valuation. So the valuation, or essentially the tax dollars that would be used to pay that debt, and saying, well, kind of from a ratio standpoint, where are we at compared to really our peer group? And so again, looking at that kind of, you know, looking and saying, well, from a leverage standpoint, we're not, you know, highly, as highly leveraged as some of our other peer cities there. And then similarly, you want to flip to the next slide, looking at that from a, you know, the total debt from a, you know, population standpoint, it's not assessed valuation. So the figure on the left is looking at governmental debt. I mentioned that's the debt that's everything except for BPW and the utilities. But then the total debt is all encompassing. So that includes the, anything related to BPW, Boswell, of the kind of business type of proprietary items. So again, even including those, if you kind of compare the City of Beatrice to the peer group, from a leverage standpoint, not near as leveraged as some of those cities. And again, I don't want to, you know, look at that and say, well, is that favorable? Is that good or bad? It's really just information for you, you know, for you folks to know and say, you know, from a leverage standpoint, what do we have out there? If we needed, what would be that ability if we needed that? The other thing to note, that's not, if you consider debt, so it's not a long-term bond, it's not a no payable, a capital lease. Some of the other long-term liabilities that some cities have as well, that you hear about from some larger cities, so pension or OEP, the other post-employment benefits, some of those larger liabilities that they have are items that the City of Beatrice just does not currently have because of the nature of some of the plans that you have. So again, from the overall liability standpoint, some of those large liabilities that you hear about in some of the bigger cities are not really an issue in the financial statements for Beatrice.
Chris, can I ask you one question?
Absolutely.
Actually, two questions.
Yep.
So from the last slide, the peer group that you're talking about, where do you gather that from? I mean, is that in the state of Nebraska? Is that a multi-state area, Midwest, East Coast, West Coast?
So the peer group that we use is a group of about five or six cities within the state of Nebraska. And then it, all of the audit reports for all cities and other political subdivisions within the state are posted on the state auditor website. So it's all publicly available information where we can pull down their most recent audit report and essentially kind of compare the similar information. So we'll take their total governmental debt and get some of the other information such as valuation, population.
Okay. So my other question is...
Yep.
Your total debt, or total governmental debt, population, well, that, because of our, you know, we're going to do the fire station within the next several years, do you, did you get the total debt to begin with? Or is that broken down annually or as, since it's sales tax dollars paying off revenue bonds, is it considered monthly?
From, are you maybe looking at, when we'd be calculating something like this?
Yep.
I guess from this standpoint, what we would look at when calculating this in the future with the potential new debt, we'd look at what is the total outstanding balance of that? So not so much debt service to say, what are we paying monthly or annually? It's really, what is our total outstanding obligation? So if we issued $5 million in bonds, that would kind of be the numerator in this equation in a sense.
Okay. Yep, that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, yep. And then the last slide, again, from a, maybe more of a sustainability standpoint, and the GFOA, who's kind of the organization that provides best practices and recommendations for cities and counties and other municipal governments across the country, puts out a kind of a recommendation that says, you know, when you look at your general fund, so the primary operating fund of the city from a governmental standpoint, so again, not including things like electric, water, those utility-type funds, just the true general fund of the city that can be used for general operating purposes. If you looked and you said your unassigned or unrestricted fund balance, so that the amount of kind of reserves that we have that can be used to pay obligations as they come due, how does that compare to our annual or kind of normal recurring expenditures within that fund? And so if you look at that comparison, just and again, we look at that from a GAAP basis at year end only. So as you look at that at different points in the year, that percentage or that factor can vary. So in a budget time, the, you know, factor may be a little bit different to what we calculated right at September 30. So at the end of the fiscal year, roughly had 3.25 months of expenditures. So if, if for some reason revenues were being shut off tomorrow, and then for, you know, whatever reason, not, you know, started back up again, if the state wasn't paying us for several months, we'd have enough reserves to pay our bills for essentially three and a half months or 3.25 months. And the GFOA recommends as a best practice that, you know, to keep that in the two-month range or higher or greater. And so obviously in Nebraska, with a little more of a conservative approach with a lot of our cities, we see that higher than two months. And I believe the city's goal overall target year over year is about three months. So at year end, you're sitting a little bit higher than that, but again, probably just a function of timing there.
I was just curious, how does that compare to last year? Are we staying consistent every year?
It was, I believe, and Linda, you might need to help me.
Last year was lower because of the EPA payouts.
Okay, I want to have a look for you.
If you go back two years, that's comparing.
Okay. Thank you.
We've talked about getting that up to six months. Is anybody at six months?
I can't say, and at least the cities that I work with, I'm not sure I have any that I can say offhand that would be six months. But again, and that's a decision for, you know, the council and governance of the city to feel that those are the reserves you want. There's, you know, nothing to, you know, say that's good or bad. It's just an approach to make sure you've got the appropriate reserves on hand if that's what you feel.
And Rick, I think one thing to keep in mind there is, as Chris alluded to, the three months that he calculated is on September 30th. January, our cash reserves are significantly lower. Remember, we have most of our funds through property taxes, which get paid twice a year. And so when you get away from those payments, your cash reserves do dip down quite a bit. So that'd be something to keep in mind too, as we look to see what limit we'd want to have.
That's a great point, absolutely.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the public? Chris, thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate your presentation.
Linda, we okay? All right, we got it.
Not going to take your word for it, Chris.
Nothing against you, Chris.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't either. I wouldn't. Thank you all.
Linda, I've got a question for you. The valuation, there's a big jump in the valuation increase. Why, why is that?
In that year, we had a large company have a very large personal property tax increase. Now remember, personal property taxes, valuations will go down as that depreciates. It wasn't real estate, it was personal property. So that's why last year we flattened off, if you remember right.
Yeah, $59 million is a big jump. I mean, did I do that math?
And part of it, that year also, we might have some TIP properties roll off. It wasn't just the personal property, it was, he has TIP projects roll off.
Two that ended.
Yeah. I can let you know kind of what those are if you want, or during budget time, we can certainly have a discussion about.
Circle that during budget time.
I will.
Okay. Because that's, that's, I mean, you just.
That was a big jump that year.
It was a big jump.
It was.
Okay.
And then like I said, we flattened off last year. So it'll be interesting to see what this year looks like. But we've had some houses built, so.
Torn some down. Those don't really, they're not really a value when you get them to that point. But I just wondered that. So, okay, thanks.
All right. We're going to move on. The next item is a public hearing, which we do not have any of. And then number four is resolutions. Resolution number 6387, executing the request for reconvenance, deed of reconvenance, and general release to release and discharge Midwest Housing Initiatives, Inc., regarding an LB840 Economic Development Loan Agreement entered into on August 24th, 2017.
May I move that resolution number 6387 be passed and adopted?
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Billsbach, that the resolution number 6387 be passed and adopted. Tobias?
This is part of the Excel housing development, if you will, at the old hospital site. This would have to be the duplexes. That was the Midwest Housing Initiative's side of that agreement or that project. Part of our LB840 loan agreement with them was they had to complete eight of those duplexes by a set time period. Completion was considered a certificate of occupancy issued by the Building Inspections Department. They have met those requirements. And so that's why before you tonight, you see the necessary documents to release the outstanding lien. As part of that agreement, we were going to forgive their LB840 loan.
Questions? Anyone? From the audience?
So that's just occupied? I mean, they're not, I mean.
I believe the discussion we had today was all eight of the duplexes are in fact rented out, and there's a waitlist of, I think there was 72 was the number I heard this morning?
Really?
So not only are they certificate of occupancy issued and can be occupied, but they are being occupied.
They need to plant some grass.
I believe that's in the works here shortly, so.
Or buy some sod. Man, it's muddy there.
Yeah. That is, next things are working on it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? End your vote, please. That is approved 8-0. Resolution number 6387 has been passed and adopted. Next item is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Does any city council member have anything for the public forum? The audience? All right. Next item is discussion and reports. And we're going to start with the Water Department, Steve Kelly, our Water Department Superintendent, not Street Department. Steve?
I don't want nothing to do with the spray department.
Too many potholes. You know?
It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I've known most of you guys for a number of years. Mr. McLean, I introduced myself as the Water Superintendent. I had the pleasure to talk to you a couple of times on the phone. Anyway, I'll give you a brief description of the department. The department consists of 10 full-time employees with, and usually have one part-time summer help. Of the 10 employees, all are certified water operators with the state of Nebraska and Nebraska Health and Human Services. I hold a grade one and a water technician hold a grade one license. And this is the highest level you can hold in the state of Nebraska. Beatrice is required to have a grade three certification. And we have six employees at this time with this certification. Our two newest employees do not have acquired time of service to upgrade their license to this level when they both hold a grade four at this time. This is kind of a breakdown of the department. Some of our duties, the Water Superintendent, I oversee all the functions of the department. A working foreman outlines the work duties for the crews. He does all locates for one call. Crew leaders, we have three crew leaders that are responsible for the crew's operation. We have utility maintenance workers, one and two. These three employees are working under the crew leaders. Water technician, this employee collects all the water samples for compliance, monitors the SCADA system, updates all our department mapping, and keeps all records for our sanitary surveys. And just by the way, we, the last two sanitary surveys we've done by Health and Human Services, we've had no deficiencies for the last six years. And the meter tech and pump operator, this employee is responsible for the water meter inventory and duties connected to the reservoir and well maintenance. We have two, we have two wellfields that serve the community.
Hey, Steve.
We have eight wells, what we call our old wellfield. And water from this wellfield, for the most part, serves coke, nitrogen, agrium, and farmer's co-op at the Hoag locations. All these customers have pointy use devices for drinking water and stay in compliance. All these wells are either over 10 parts per million or just under. Very little of this water is pumped to the town, and we have, and we keep a flow of about 75 gallons per minute just to keep the overhead river crossing, creek crossing from freezing, and also keep the water fresh in the transmission main. Four of these wells were put in service in 1931, three in 1965, and one in 1967. The city farm wellfield has four high-capacity wells, which pump up to 2,500 gallons per minute if needed. However, we operate these wells on VFDs and pump them much slower to save several thousand dollars each year on electricity costs. These wells are very low in nitrates and supply about 95% of the water that we use in the city. Two of these wells were put in service in 1997, and the other two in 2001. We have not seen any change in the amount of water available or the nitrate levels to date. To better explain how we operate, we pump the water from the mentioned wellfields to the underground reservoirs located at Fourth and Grant. The North Reservoir was built in 1931 and holds 3 million gallons. The South Reservoir holds 5 million gallons and was built in 1965. There is no treatment of the water supply, but we do add, add a made-on-site chlorine. And this chlorine is made from table salt and is very safe for the public and our employees. From the reservoirs, the chlorinated water is pumped into the system, and the excess goes into the water towers. The North Tower holds 1 million gallons, was built in 1965. The South Tower holds a half million gallons and was built in 1981. Once the water towers reach a preset level, it sends a signal to shut off the pumps at Fourth and Grant. And we operate on pressure from the height of the tower, of the water in the tower. We see very little difference in the pressure with or without the pumps running into the system. The average pressure is 60 PSI with a range of 50 to 85, depending on elevations and reference to the water towers. The average use in town is 1.85 million gallons a day. The total pumped in town in 2018 was 672,353,000 gallons. The average per capita use is 147 gallons per day. Coke nitrogen has an average use of 1.67 million gallons a day, and we pump to them 612,97,000. The apartment maintains about 5,700 water services, water meters and taps. We also have 105 miles of water main in city limits, 18 miles of transmission mains to maintain. There are about 1,200 water valves, 728 fire hydrants we also maintain. We also flow test each hydrant each year, and they are color-coded, so the fire department knows approximately how much water to expect when they need them. We also try and exercise each of the water valves as time allows, but generally we get them done depending on the weather during the winter months. We also check and test repairs as needed, 400 backflow devices each year. Lastly, we do install and replace our own water mains as needed. We try and replace a minimum of one mile pipeline each year or about 1% of the system. In a normal year, we install about 25 new water taps and replace on average about additional 100, 100 additional water taps during these water main replacements. That's pretty much it in about five minutes, so.
When's the next time you're going to drain the reservoirs on Fourth Street? When's the next time you're going to drain the reservoirs on Fourth Street?
Well, we'll do that in two more years. We do it every five years. So we'll drain and clean the reservoirs, usually do the south one first, then the north one the next month, so.
If any of you guys feel adventurous when they do that, go down into those reservoirs, it's really impressive.
It's about, we got a snatch of ladder goes down in there. It's, we do light it up, and it's approximately 20 foot deep. And the north one's about 150 foot square, and the other one's more of a rectangle shape, but it's probably 200 by 150, so. But yeah, it's quite expensive to get down there, so. We should have some pictures here. Back here looking now, right there, to the left there, that's the North Reservoir. That's the columns. And keep in mind, this was built in 1931, so you're talking, you know, 85 plus years. Then in the bottom picture there, those actually are clay pipe, where it comes in cast iron and switches to clay. It's got an outlet going towards the wall. Every other pipe has got an outlet on it, so it's evenly distributed over the, over to the reservoir. That keeps the water mixed more. And then the picture on the right is one of our vertical pumps. We've replaced all the original pumps in that pump house in the last 10 years or so. Those pump, pump, that pump there actually pump about 2,500 gallons a minute, and we have two other ones in our pump about 1,000 gallons a minute. Okay. There's the South Reservoir, yeah, it was built in 65. And I don't know if you can recognize that gentleman in the picture, but it's not me, it's Mr. Biddings.
Mr. Wayne.
Yeah. And those there are more, those, the pumps on those reservoirs are more like a well. They do have the column pipe that goes down, and the pump is clear down there in the bottom three, four feet. And they're actually in a recessed area there and pump the water. We got three pumps there in that reservoir, and they pump anywhere from 1,500 to 1,000, 1,500 gallons a minute. And each reservoir, we do have some standby stuff. I think I've got some pictures of that coming up here. There's the inlet on the South Reservoir, and then the bottom question, number five there is actually the drain. We got a valve outside, we can drain that into, actually to the storm sewer. These are the water towers, north one, that's during construction, of course. Prior to 1965, we had to have somebody set down and basically have done our Fourth and Grant in that North Reservoir, because we only had one reservoir at that time, and they had a pressure gauge. And they would actually turn the pumps on and off as needed to maintain pressure. We had to have a pump running 24/7. The water towers eliminate that need because once the towers fall, we serve off gravity South Tower, of course, we got Beatrice on there, on that one.
I tried to get him to paint hot and cold on those.
There's some stuff we just kind of went over there.
I was just curious, how many days of reserve water, if something really bad happened, how many days can the city go when everything's full?
I'm sorry, I'm very hard to hear, so.
Say there was a disaster, how many days of water reserve does the city have? How many days could you last?
We got, we got 8 million gallons there, we got a million and a half in the air, so we got 9 and a half million gallons. I hope I'm answering the question you want. Anyway, we average 1.75, oh, 85 million gallons. So we got, we got, we're very fortunate, we got almost a four-day supply. And we could actually make that last probably a week by telling people to only use the water as necessary. So we're very fortunate there.
Any other questions, Steve?
Okay, if you got to insert another one.
No, that's the end of your pictures.
All right.
Any questions?
No, but I don't think those kids understood that there's a, those lofts are underground over there by the practice fields.
I did.
It's creepy. Oh, no, I think they were neat.
Actually going down the ladder.
Yeah, I didn't like going down the ladder, didn't like standing there, really liked going back up.
I thought they were neat.
Yeah. If I had to go down that ladder, somebody would have to get me back out there. I'd stay.
If you go to the south one, PD, would you, would you have a hoister? We could strap you and lower you down.
That's what I would need.
I went down the north one with Wayne, when him and I still talked.
Yeah. As far as the department goes, I took over in 1990 as the department superintendent, and I have already a little turnover, so I got three guys that are, got 30 years, one guy that's got 29, and then a few guys right at 20. So what's that tell you, basically? We're getting, we're getting aging workforce, so. It's nice to have some turnover, but we like, we still get the job done with the guys we got. And we'll see how long I stay around and see how long everybody stays around. But next 10, 12 years is going to be a big change probably on the Water Department.
Steve, the underground reservoirs like that, is that pretty common? And do a lot of cities have those?
A lot of places call them clear wells, because they usually have treatment. Yeah, every, every town that does treatment has, would have one or two of them, so. But a lot of these smaller towns, no, they just have, they pump right into the tower and that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Next is Dean Kelch with the WPC Department.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dean Kelch. I'm the chief operator down there. I take care of the WPC Department. I just took a bunch of pictures. If you guys want to look at the screen, I'm just going to cruise through them real quick.
Introduce your employees.
Employees right here.[1797.16] Employees right here, I've got, I've got six full-time employees, we got five part-time employees, actually, they just started, their first day was today. The compost site opened up for first day today, so.
Is the ball cap mandatory?
Hey, that's an official BPW hat there.
Wear the colors.
So what's kind of neat here is we're a small department that, you know, as you're gonna see, we cover, you know, there's pretty much no part of town that we don't cover one way or another. Like Steve was saying, we're pretty lucky, we got Jerry, he's been there thirty-five years and the other Jerry twenty-five, so between them six people, we've got over a hundred years of experience too, so that comes in handy.
Dean, go back one. So Johnny Barta is generally in the plant, correct?
Yep, John Barta works in the plant. I'll go over that as pictures if you want, but yeah, Johnny stays there in the plant with me pretty much full-time. Carmichael's in charge of the compost site, Dave does a lot of the lift stations and locates. And then Jerry and Bob are the jetters, they take care of the collection system, so. And we'll go over that, I took lots of pictures, so. This was kind of neat, the day that Tobias asked me to put this together was the first day of the flood started coming up. And I thought this was neat because this was a plant in October nineteen seventy-three, it looks like maybe they were having some problems back then too. So you can see the size of that and then here is what we got today and we'll go through it. But this is the first building, when the influence comes in, this is the first building that it sees. We call it our headworks building. The left side is the wet well, the right side is the dry well. Here's a new bar screen we put in last year, that's the first thing that wastewater runs into when it comes into the plant. See, it's fairly long, there's a second level, that's a twenty-foot extension ladder sitting there, so it kind of gives you an idea how many steps we gotta go down to get there. Here's another level down at the bottom. What the bar screen does is it catches all the debris, sticks, rags, any of big objects that we don't want going through our pumps. That right there is a partial flume, an ultrasonic transducer, that's what monitors our flow, tells us what we got coming into the plant. That's kind of blurry, but that's actually the bar screen sitting in the channel. And that's, all the debris gets kind of hung up on there and it's got some fingers, like a rake that comes down over them bars and it rakes that material out of there. This, this is what, where it does it, brings it all the way up to the top, it washes it, washes all the organic material off and dumps the debris into there. So that's kind of all the stuff we don't want in our, running through our pumps in our plant, plugging everything up. This is kind of a neat little machine we got, it's a twenty-four-hour composite sampler, it keeps us from having to be there twenty-four hours a day. I can tell that thing, give me a two hundred and fifty milliliter sample every hour for twenty-four hours. I come in, open up that refrigerator door and voila, I got a twenty-four-hour sample D-Lab work with. Here's some more steps going down the other side, it's like sixty-six feet down. When you get down there, there's five pumps, those three big ones are three ninety-five horsepower pumps and the two smaller ones are thirty-five horsepower pumps that we added two years ago. And the reason we did that was because the big pumps were just, they were, they'd turn on, turn off, and so we had surges going through the plant, which isn't really the best way for treatment. So we redesigned that, now we got nice consistent flow all day long coming from them two smaller pumps. Although these three big ones did run quite a bit during the flood, got a lot of eye on eye. Just a couple of control panels that we got around the plant, you know, monitoring the wet well levels. Here we can program, you know, which pumps we want to run, we can program the levels we want to maintain. Something goes wrong there, calls us out or alarm goes off. These are the two new VFDs, that's variable frequency drives, they put in on the two new pumps. Neat thing about that is you can look and see the size of them, they're what maybe a block and a half wide and six blocks tall. And then these are the old ones, they're like six feet tall and four feet wide, so technology is improving. Next spot it goes to is the grit building. That's where all the inorganic material, the stuff that we can't treat organically is removed. Basically the same stuff as the bar screen, only this is smaller, smaller material. You can see it catches stuff like gravel and sand and eggshells and, you know, things like that, things that can't be treated biologically. And they're removed and hauled away. Here's a couple aeration pumps that we have and of course aeration pumps, that's what they do, they aerate the water, so we gotta maintain those. They go from the aeration, you'll go into a primary clarifier, the primary clarifiers where everything that's heavy settles to the bottom, everything that floats, floats to the top. Anything that floats gets skimmed off here with these skimmage boards, there's an arm that comes around and skims that stuff off there and we get that out of the system. From there, it goes to the trickling filter. Trickling filter's got a slimy mass, biological mass growing on it, all over that media there, it's, you know, many feet deep, but. That slime, they call it, the actual name for it's a zuglio mass because it's just all sorts of bacteria and microorganisms that actually treat and remove all that organic material. Gets rid of the bad nasty stuff that we don't want in our water, just another picture of it. These are the RVCs, rotating biological contactors, they basically do the same thing as the trickling filter. They're kind of obsolete, this was original equipment in the plant. Don't use them too much anymore, well, really never because you can see there's all kinds of gearboxes and motors and belts and pumps. Takes a lot of energy, a lot of maintenance, keep them going. These are actually gonna go away here in the near future, we can talk about that later. But they're, they kind of do the same thing as trickling filter except for the water trickling down through the media. These are actually, the media rotates mechanically through the wastewater and it trickles down through the media. And then these are just two final clarifiers, what happens next is it's a different kind of sludge that they catch. All that growth that grows on the RVCs and the trickling filter, it dies and it sloughs off and it floats and it looks nasty. So we don't want none of that floating down the river, so that's where all this, that material is removed. That's actually the effluent going over the weirs after it's been treated, so you can tell it's, you know, it's barely clean. Doesn't look nothing like it did when it came in. That's the effluent right there, just, it's monitoring because we got, we monitor the water coming in and out. This here is our UV system, it's not in service right now, it won't start up until May first. It gets, it treats everything for like E. coli and fecal coliforms and, you know, the pathogens that that you don't want to have in the water, especially during the warm weather season when people are playing in the water.
Is that where the UV bulbs are?
Yep, yep, that, that channel right there will have these in it, right now they're being overhauled. We, every winter, we pull them and go through them and get them ready to go again and so they'll be ready to go here. Actually, I just had the guys finish this up today and so we'll be putting them in. We usually fire them up a couple of weeks early to make sure everything's working, so they'll be ready on May first. That's actually a finished rack there, they'll sit down in the water. And somehow that, what that does is it sends out ultraviolet light and it sterilizes the, I don't know, microorganisms, I guess. And so they can't reproduce and they don't live much, much longer after they pass through there. There's a liquid polymer system which, and there's a couple of sludge pumps that, you know, we were talking about all that stuff settling in the bottom of them tanks. Well, what do we do with it? These pumps, they pump it up to this machine, it uses Parks and Belt press. This is the next piece of equipment that we're working on getting rid of. It hasn't been very nice to us. Just a couple other views of it, there's Johnny standing there reading the readings, making sure, trying to keep it running.
Yeah, Dean, that belt press is from what country?
I think it's from Florida.
Is it from Florida? I thought the parts come out of Norway or something.
I think that's gonna be the, the centrifuges are from Germany, I think.
That's the part we're having problems getting pieces for anymore.
Well, this one is the one, yeah, these parts are obsolete. Actually, the guys that, when you call down there and say, hey, we're having a problem with this, they're like, well, those guys don't work here anymore. We don't know nothing about them, so. We've even had some people from Lincoln wastewater plant come up and look at it and they're saying, I don't know how it runs, but it runs. But the, you can see what happens here is all that material coming off them primary clarifiers is more of a liquid form coming on here and it mixes with that polymer and somehow, you know, that polymer makes that, all that solids kind of gather together, floculate, they call it floculate. And then they get squeezed through some rollers. And we have this product, you want a looking bear belt. There's John doing some lab work, calibrating pH meter. But once, once we've, we can't haul it coming off the clarifiers because it's like still ninety-five percent liquid. So once we mix it with the polymer and run it across the press, now we've got a, it's about seventy-five percent liquid, but that's still, that's only twenty-five percent solids there, but at least it's in a state that we can haul it.
And where do you haul it to?
We haul it to the compost site, so I'll let you guys guess what that guy's shoveling there.
Compost.
We like, we call it biosolids. So whenever you're having a bad day, you could be down there helping John, I guess. But that machine up there on that trailer is actually what we're gonna replace the belt press with. They, back in September, these guys, this company called Andritz came in and did a pilot run. And of course their little cabarett belt wouldn't reach into our truck, so we had to load it this way and it wasn't any fun, but. There's just another picture of John, this two thousand gallon fuel barrel that runs our four hundred kilowatt backup generator because even if the power goes out, well, wastewater plant's gotta keep treating, right? It'd be good if it didn't. That's just another little picture of one of them machines, it's a centrifuge that we'll be replacing that Parks and Belt press. Okay, so what do we do with the sludge? We go out here, we take it to the compost site. And a little shack we got there for the part-timers so they can, you know, kind of have a little bit of shelter when they're out there waiting for people. Do have a place out there now till eight o'clock at night for people to take their brush, even once the landfill closes, we kind of take care of that. Got some pile of compost there all the time, it's free for public. If they want to come out and scoop it on themselves or anybody, they're welcome to it. It's kind of a pile of what we saved up over the winter, biosolids, right? A nice little area we keep, try to keep rock and everything, keep that from being all muddy for the people to come out be able to dump their grass and leaves or garden waste or whatever. There's some wood chips out there we use in the compost. Here's some of the machinery that we use out there, there's a pump, we have a pond out there that, you know, we're not allowed to discharge. So the only thing we can do is either haul it to town or we are allowed to irrigate out there on our own property. So we do another, kind of a nice screen there, that yellow piece of equipment is a screen, it screens out all the big chunks and gives us our nice Class A compost. Got a nice loader out there that we use, does a lot of work for us. There's a brown bear, it stirs the compost. Probably wouldn't have too much luck making compost without that, so that thing, that thing saves a lot of work. Tractor and loader that we use once in a while, if the loader's broke down or being used somewhere else. There's Jerry, I caught him off-guard. Just another picture of the, some of the equipment. Here's a snow plow, I don't know, you know, if anybody knows or not, but WPC has that snow plow and that loader and we take care of all the snow removal on the south side of the river. So, you know, Veterans Park, Belvedere, Country Club area, all that gets done by WPC. And it does take about twelve hours, it's pretty time-consuming, there's a lot of cul-de-sacs. You know, if we just had to plow straight lines, it wouldn't be bad, but we're not that lucky over there. It's another plow that we have for the truck. I use there clearing off the plant and our lift stations and been kind of opening up Hannibal Park for P-THO with that. I am lucky enough, I got a couple of guys, including myself, that are pretty handy in the shop, so we do quite a, quite a few of our own repairs. There was me walking around with, talking about the floodwater was coming up that day. That started coming up, so I snapped a few pictures, it got a whole lot worse than that a couple of days later. But this does kind of cause us a little bit of problems there because we get a lot of eye on eye. And, you know, the, we've got sewer lines that run down along the river and that ground gets saturated and we just get a lot of flow coming in. Wouldn't need a wastewater treatment plant if we didn't have a collection system, right? So I got two men and a truck, right, we've heard of that, two men and a truck, they, that's all they do, you know, weather permitting, they're out there cleaning the sewer lines. There's just about a hundred miles of sewer lines for that, for those guys to take care of, so it's a big job. And so. That's a little easement machine, a lot of times, you know, it's not only a hundred miles of lines, but sometimes whoever designed the sewer systems didn't put all the manholes in the middle of the street where they're probably in the middle of a block behind somebody's house with fences all around it. So this little machine here is small enough that we can hook it up to the reel on the jet truck and drive it right in the backyard and get after it. About five, six years ago, we bought a camera trailer and we've had a lot of fun with that. There's the camera itself. There's some of the pictures that we take, you can see that just roots, there's just a little hole there left for somebody there. There's a tap that's severed, broken off. We do send these people letters, the residents own the tap. Even once they drill into that, our city main, they own the connection, so we do send these people letters. We can't really force them to fix it, but at least we notify them. There's some more stuff that we just found, you can see that, I don't know what happened there, but wasn't good. This one here, we think that a whole section fell off in there, that other little hole in the back, we think it's about four to six feet back in there. There's probably a nice sinkhole starting there. This is kind of neat, this is kind of what we fight all the time, the guys on the jet truck, they try to stay ahead of that, but we don't always have the best of luck. This particular line has been lined, the city has went in there and put a brand-new liner in it, but the roots have found their way through a tap. It's in not-so-good shape and so you can actually have a perfectly good city main and something like that can cause you a blockage in the backup, which we don't want. I think somebody probably used a ball peen hammer back in the day to make that hole. Here's what one should look like. Nice new liner, nice tap, nice clean tap. There's another mess. There's another nice shot of a new line that the city went in and they, they put a liner in. Nice thing about them are they're seamless from manhole to manhole, so you don't have any room for eye on eye unless you have a tap that's compromised.
Dean, those liners have really saved the city a lot of money.
Yeah, they do, a nice thing about them is, you know, you can, you don't have to do any digging, you know, you don't have to tear up the screeds. You don't have to, you know, they are, they're pretty, they're pretty slick. There's a sinkhole starting, if you ever see something like that, be careful because it might only be the size of a golf ball up here, but it could be a hole there is half as big as this room down at the bottom, we've had that happen before. This is kind of a neat little deal we use every day, it's Arc Reader. We've been working with engineering for quite a few years. They actually do have all the sewer lines documented. So this was one that I just happened to use that day I was doing this, some engineers called me up and said, hey, we're gonna renovate the hotel out here, they go deep. we're gonna renovate the hotel out here. They go deep. Can you tell us where your utilities are? So I just bring this up on Arc Reader, and I, I could just send them a picture of this. I can click on that line, and it'll tell me what year it was put in, what size it is, what it's made out of, how deep it is. You know, uh, we can work with uh, engineering. Actually, if the guys have gone through there and TV'd that with the camera, uh, you can, a lot of times you can call down there and Doug, I don't have that capability yet. We would like to have that someday. But engineering, if we have done it, they can click on that, and the homeowner can actually, they'll say, hey, do you know where our tap is? Uh, they can click on that, say, okay, from the center of that manhole, you're fifty feet, fifty feet south. So it'll give them a spot, or a spot to maybe start digging if they have a problem. Real handy, they're gonna, you know, eventually do the water lines too. You can see the water lines are actually on here too. They're in blue. Uh, so here's another one where they called and said the laundromat didn't have water, and they was wanting to know where our utilities were. There's a nice shot. You can see I was talking about that easement machine. You see how you get to them manholes to clean that? Not very easy, is it? So that's where that easement machine comes in handy. Just some more Arc Reader stuff. Real handy too. We use it every day. First thing we use every morning, we got locates. Or somebody calls and says, hey, there's a gas leak. We're, we're gonna dig here. We can look at this and say, hey, we're, we're not anywhere close, or or hey, wait a minute, we are there. So it's real quick and handy. There's the actual pump that we were having problems with over at Storkraft. It, it conked out on us. It was uh, I believe, a broken shaft, so it was non-reparable, so we ended up having to drop a new, new pump in that wet well over there. Um, so like I say, this, this stuff's gotta work all day, every day, or we got a problem. There's Dave checking a relay on something. There's Richard. He, he helps us out quite a bit. He's trying to explain this to me. I don't think he had very good luck that day. So. Uh, lift station number one down on First and Bell. You guys ever seen that structure there? This going down some steps. This is what's down there. We've got all kinds of master control panels. Got grinder, uh, transfer switch for backup generator. And of course, this is all the relays. You can see we got a couple sticky notes hanging on some of them, cause uh, sometimes it's kind of a pain to figure out which one's giving you a fit. Actually, looking down in the wet well there. This is Pleasant Weeby lift station. If you ever see them little cans there like that and wonder what's in there, that's what's in there, a big hole. That particular one's twenty-eight feet deep, so it's confined space entry. Guys are trained in confined space. Get down to the bottom of them, there's what you're gonna see. You're gonna see a sub pump, a couple of, a couple of pumps that a couple of check valves and shut off valves that we have to maintain. Uh, Storkraft, that's the master control panel at Storkraft.
Can you get to that?
Yeah, we can.
We actually have an easement with Storkraft down um, Irving Street.
Yeah, we can get to it. There, we've actually go around back behind. They're, they kind of made a little access road. We've been able to get to it. Uh, newest lift station we got there on uh, like First and Herbert Street. Here's what, uh, some of the smaller lift stations run on floats, and I gotta send the guys out every week, once a week, clean the grease off of these, cause they sometimes they'll get grease balls on them, and they don't want to work very well, so the guys are out there cleaning them every week. There's some grease that we got out of Storkraft. Those grease chunks bigger than cement blocks, so you can imagine, you know, so you got guys, if you, if you ever see on my reports that, hey, we cleaned the wet wells, this is crap we're cleaning out of there. Ain't no fun. Of course, there's a backup generator we have too. If we lose power to any one of them nine lift stations, we got, well, this is the generator here that we go get, and we can hook it up and keep them lift stations running. There, you can see that manhole. Somebody did some work around it. Unfortunately, they knocked a bunch of concrete down in there, and the only way to get them out was to actually go down in there and get them. So there's another confined space entry we got. We got all the equipment for the confined space entry. It's a pretty slick little crane there. This is kind of neat, since we've got a lot of eye and eye coming into the plant. I thought I'd share it with you. I, I picked this up at a conference I went to. They tell me a five gallon per minute groundwater leak. Five gallons per minute times sixty minutes is three hundred gallons per hour. Okay, three hundred gallons per hour times twenty-four is seventy-two hundred gallons per day. Uh, three hundred, three hundred gallons per hour times twenty-four hours is seventy-two hundred gallons per day. They're saying that the average cost is two dollars and sixty-nine cents per thousand, I believe, yeah, per thousand gallons. That's what it costs to treat wastewater on a national average, two sixty-nine per thousand. So if you have seventy-two hundred gallons a day, times two dollars and sixty-nine cents per thousand, it comes up to nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents per day. Or uh, is that, am I reading that right?
Yep, you are.
Fourteen dollars, and I, that don't make sense. Fourteen dollars per day times three sixty-five. You'd think that would be nineteen. But anyway, even if it's fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents per day, times three hundred and sixty-five days, that one leak can cost you seven thousand sixty-six dollars a year per leak, so that's why you're gonna, you, you hear us talk about eye and eye. That's actually infiltration. Um, it's probably something we're gonna be looking at in our next budget, because we've got a lot of it down by the river. I don't even know why I put that in there. I think that was just because Tobias has Aaron send it to us all the time to update our capital budget plan, so just to let you know they're on top of that. There's the guys. They were basically running back and forth doing some maintenance. Skid steer we bought. Little bit more lab equipment, chlorine that we use, and that's about it. Um, you guys got any questions?
Any questions of Dean?
I mean, we got quite a bit going on. I tried to cover a lot in a short time, so.
I'd just say, for those who are new, we've had quite a bit of changes down at the plant over the last couple of years, making some improvements. There's quite a bit more planned over the next couple of years to make additional improvements down there. So when you look at your budget, one of the expense light items that you'll see that's probably significant will be in Dean's capital budget. When you look, review that here in probably July and August.
Right. And that'll probably be over the, replacing the press and going with the centrifuges and uh, you know, the other thing to think about in the future is, I know they've been telling us for the last five or six years, you know, that they're, they're probably gonna be sticking everybody with nitrate uh, limits. Our plant isn't capable of treating for nitrates, nitrogen. Uh, so there will be eventually, you'll see a changeover. You see that trickling filter and RBCs go away, and they'll replace it with a we're looking at what they call an SBR, sequential batch reactor, which is actually capable of treating nitrogen and phosphorus, and the reason they don't like nitrogen, you know, nitrogen in your water is not good for living creatures like us or any other living creature. Um, I don't know, Steve, they probably watch, make you guys check nitrates that, you know, if they get too high, they can cause something. They call it uh, methemoglobinemia. A lot of people call it as a blue baby syndrome. So it can be fatal. You know, so that's why they're, they're watching nitrogen and uh, they just don't like it in the water, so that's about it.
We are in compliance with federal regulations.
Yeah, yeah, we're compliant. Dean does a great job. We're always, we don't have any issues there.
No.
We're a step ahead of them, huh?
Yeah.
Trying to stay there.
Actually, Beatrice has really been proactive and instead of reactive, because I mean, if we would just wait around and then all of a sudden they say, hey, you need a treat for this, they give you like twenty-four months to come into compliance, so you'd be, you know, having to come up with a bunch of money and uh, you know, getting after it pretty busy, so we decided way back, I don't know, five years ago, I think Tobias and I started talking, and so we're just kind of pecking away. We know it's gonna happen, so we're just kind of using the cash that we have available and just working on them one project at a time. And so that's how we decided to do it.
Any other questions of Dean? Dean, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Last item on the agenda is our legislative update. Tobias?
Uh, again, you have the list in there. I guess I'll just point out LB four seventy-two. This is Senator Dorn's bill, which would impose a countywide sales tax uh, to pay for the judgment of Beatrice six. It did make it out of committee. It is on general file. Um, Byron did file an amendment, uh, that's currently pending, has not been voted on yet. His amendment was negotiated with the league municipalities, and his amendment would basically state that if any county were to use uh, the sales tax as uh, stated in LB four seventy-two, they have to set their property tax levy at the maximum. So you can't just set it lower than use your sales tax. You have to set it to maximum. Um, it's called the Qualified Judgment Payment Act. It terminates January one of twenty twenty-seven. Uh, and the judgment has to be in excess of twenty-five million dollars. And it has to roll off at, you know, at, at the end of seven years or once it's been paid in full, so that's kind of the amendment he has proposed. Again, it has not been voted on yet, but he just filed it here just, I think, last week. But that is probably the most significant bill that's out there as far as the city's concerned.
Rich? Now, they don't have, this goes to the county boards, right?
Correct. The way LB four seventy-two is written, it would be a county board vote, not a vote of the people to impose the tax.
Okay, didn't we talk about this at one time? That if they were asking for council approval, someone was, the league of city uh, uh, municipalities or something wanting to know what this council thought?
Obviously, the league municipalities is interested in what the city Beatrice has to think, since it's, you know, a, a judgment that would impact us. Uh, namely that the sales tax here would increase. As everybody's aware, our sales tax increased today for the fire station. Uh, that took effect today. And so yes, the league municipalities, you know, is interested in where Beatrice is at on this, on this issue.
And that, that tax put us equal with Lincoln?
Uh, yes.
And if we impose another half cent city sales tax to county on us, that would put us a half cents higher than what Lincoln charges?
Yes, uh, keep in mind though, Lincoln does have an occupation tax, is what they call it, in areas around South Point most noticeably, uh, and down by the arena. So they don't call it a sales tax. They call it occupation tax. They do charge a little higher in those areas. But yes, sales tax wise, you would be the highest then.
Well, when we discussed this the last time, uh, it was just kind of an offhand discussion, I believe, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we kind of take a straw vote on that of of how some of the council members feel, felt about uh, sending a something to the municipal people up there of, I think maybe we should uh discuss this and uh, send something up to Lincoln about how we feel about this tax. I've had people uh come to me and they're not quite happy about it, that the board just gets to impose a tax without this going to the voters. I mean, uh, you know, when we put our uh, fire haul up, we put it out to the voters. When uh, the uh, the uh, courthouse got done, it was put on by the voters. I just don't think it's proper that a, that a government entity puts a tax on without it going to the voters. And I'm very uncomfortable with that, and I think that if
I think if we're gonna discuss it further, we probably ought to put it on the agenda.
Well, then uh, I would like to put this on the, when is that going to be uh?
Next meeting's April fifteenth.
And when is this going to be discussed at the legislature?
That I couldn't tell you. The, the speaker up there sets the agenda, and so I'm not sure when uh, the speaker will put this on the agenda again. Uh, if you guys are familiar, obviously, it would take three rounds of voting to get through the legislature, so I don't see three rounds of voting happening between now and April fifteenth.
But I believe I called you right after it come out of the committee, didn't I?
Yes, we did have a conversation.
If we could maybe discuss that, it didn't get put on the agenda. So yes, I would like to have that put on the agenda for the fifteenth.
There's how many days left in the session?
I think it's, they finished till around June first.
How many days are left?
Thirty-five, forty.
Thirty-six, forty.
They're not meeting on Fridays now, I think.
Yeah, they're not meeting on Fridays, but they, but still, I just, so.
I'm, I'm curious though, on the, the different areas of South Point and around the PBA and everything, um, how much is the tax in that area? There, there's parts of Omaha that are over nine, nine something. Was it, are there five different occupational taxes in Omaha that are?
I'd have to do some research. I don't know off the top of my head what those.
Three, I think, isn't there?
I can do some looking and see what those occupational tax come out to be.
They're substantial. It's, it's noticeable.
Yeah, in Omaha, it definitely is. And I don't, I don't think Lincoln is quite as bad as what Omaha is.
Yeah, well, it's limited in Omaha. I mean, there's, it's not, it's not citywide.
No, but it's, there's five different areas in Omaha, I think, that, you know, the capital district, you know, blah, blah, blah.
We'll do some research and get that information for you.
Any other questions of Tobias?
Tobias, I did appreciate, we, you and I spoke about the extremely blighted.
Right.
And I, I looked at that, and then that's what the fallout was. I mean, that's where, there was always a little bit of a at the legislative branch, I mean, there was always a little bit of a there's always some tension in that between rural and urban senators, but that's really seemed to be the, the straw that broke camel's back.
Yeah.
And I, and, and I didn't realize until I read the article, what, what the whole problem that was. I thought that that as, as we spoke, I thought that was really pretty, um, you know, laser focused, and he had specific things in mind and had it, that, it really got very pleasant.
Very personal, very quickly.
Very personal, very quickly.
Yes, it did.
Yep, and that's going nowhere.
No, I'm not sure what other fallout that will have as a result of
Well, but I mean, but the, the extremely blighted thing, that's dead. Yeah, and it killed a lot of things on the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, our next meeting is going to be on April fifteenth, and uh, we'll have a work session on April twenty-second. Mr. Claybaugh, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move that the meeting be adjourned at eight twenty-eight.
Moved by Claybaugh, seconded by Cook, that the meeting be adjourned at eight twenty-eight. Your vote, please, and that is approved, eight zero.